Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. And in your thoughts, keep in mind Howard Jacobson, who had served the town on the Cable Advisory Committee and been part of the Fair TV initial group, who passed away recently, and Dr. James Baum, who had served the town in number capacities, most recently on the Flood and Erosion Control Board. All right, first up, Wednesday's pet, former First Selectman Sherry Stenick, and a couple of four-legged friends here.
We actually have two today. First one is a one-year-old female dachshund mix. Her name is Feisty. I would not tell you that she doesn't shed, and if I put her down, you look at my jacket, you'll notice that that should be the truth, she does shed. But she's lovely and has a great personality, and has been very pleased to meet everybody in the room so far. She can be found at, she's $15 to adopt her, she'll be at 211 One Run Highway Animal Control with a bunch of her friends. And we also have a rabbit who is free. It is, well, I'm going to swap animals.
So Sherry, this is your multilingual, you speak many languages?
I speak many languages, yes. This is the rabbit, and his name, excuse me, is Bugs. And we have no idea how old Bugs is, but Bugs is free to a good home, and is very gentle and calm, and just the kind of pet you want. Again, 211 One Run Highway. I think this is a perfect pet for you, Mike.
Thank you, Sherry.
And the dog wants to stay.
Have you noticed that?
Sherry has continued this tradition of Wednesday's pets since, for the last two years, since she finished as First Selectman here in town. So Sherry, thank you very much again. And moving on, we have some special recognition. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me at the podium. We're here to recognize the 2013 Fairfield Ward High School and Fairfield Ludlow High School National Association of Music Education All-National Mixed Band and All-National Mixed Choir. Does that fit like on a pin? That's one heck of a name. This is one of the recognitions we've been trying to do to make sure that our town realizes how special our education system is and how special our students are, in terms of what they've been able to both learn and give back to our community as we go through this. So we have some certificates. So if I could ask everybody to come and stand up in front here. And we have a certificate for everyone here, so we want to congratulate Eliza Plant for participating in the National Association for Music Education's All-National Mixed Choir and for her outstanding musical achievements. Next, we have Evelyn Folda for participating in the National Association for Music Education's All-National Mixed Choir and for her outstanding achievements. And next, Zachary Robert for participating in the National Association for Music Education's All-National Mixed Choir and for his outstanding achievements. And Joseph Sugru for participation in the National Association for Music Education's All-National Band and for his outstanding musical achievements. And for Connor Levinson for participating in the National Association for Music Education's All-National Band and for his achievements. And Liam Russell for participating in the National Association for Music Education All-National Band and for his outstanding achievements. Now, is there a spokesperson who'd like to tell us a little bit more about what this experience was and what it meant to you? Yeah, you don't have to sing it, you can just talk. Please come up to the podium so you can kind of stand by the mic.
All right. Okay, so the six of us went down to Nashville for about four days, three nights, and we had near to 11 hours of rehearsal every day. It was pretty crazy, but we got the music ahead of time, so we were prepared. And we had amazing conductors. We actually had a man named Rallo Dilworth, and we performed one of his pieces, which was pretty exciting, to work with him and see his different techniques of teaching and how they differ from our teachers and how they're the same. So that was pretty cool. And then we had a final performance on Wednesday to kind of show our parents and people in the community what the All-National Choir and Band and Orchestra were all about, so it was pretty fun.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else care to say a few words? We're going to go with that?
Yeah.
Please go right ahead.
I just want to, I have my blue jacket back there, as Ms. Armata reminded me, so Ludlow and Ward. I have to say that I've had the honor of hearing many of you perform, and it's amazing what you've done and the hard work and commitment that you've made is tremendous. And I also want to thank your teachers as well, and I know that they are committed to you as well as your parents for their support of you also. So thank you, you make us very proud.
Yes, please. And to add to that, thank you very much for representing our town, your families, your teachers, and everyone who has supported you along the way. And the one thing I wanted to mention is, the results of your hard work and your achievements are a direct result of the great music program that our schools have and the investments we've made into it, and in the people and the teachers that provide such a wonderful musical education to you and help you broaden that.
Just to be clear, it is not a requirement that you stay around for the rest of the year. Or I guess in your terminology, please feel free to cut class.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on with our agenda. Next item, item number five, to consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting September 11th, 2013. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. A second. Any comments or changes? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, to consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting of October 16, 2013. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any comments or changes? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to item six, and this is what I referenced earlier. Unfortunately, we've had two of our committee members pass away. The Cable Advisory Committee, Area Two, Howard Jacobson, Democrat, 666 Sturgis Highway, his term was 713 through 715. And on the Flood and Erosion Control Board, Dr. James Baum, Democrat, 1790 Fairfield Beach Road, term 1109 through 1114. These are vacancies, this is for information only, and we'll be looking for replacements at that point. Next up, Penfield Building Committee Charge. We have gotten a host of feedback from the community in the form of emails sent in on this charge. We will make those emails available to the entire committee so they can see firsthand kind of what the feedback was from the committee. I think there were a couple clarifications that I did want to make based on one of the emails sent in. The, one of the requests was that the charge specify that this go back to the RTM. It is pretty evident, based on whatever happens, the dollar amount needed will exceed the $1 million that was originally passed back in January 2013. So that would require any expenditures in excess, and that would require it go back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, and that's part of our normal process. So we'd expect this to follow that. And I just wanted to make that clear. I will open discussion up, and I guess we'd need a motion to review and revise the charge for the Penfield Building Committee. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay, so the charges before us, this has been passed once, we brought this back before us to see if there's anything else we needed to add to that. Again, many of the comments that came through, at least from my perspective, subject to my colleagues' comments, are items that our Building Committee can consider and should consider, but not all of them should or need to be, in my mind, directly reflected in the charge. However, let me open up discussion and see what the thoughts are of my colleagues.
Mr. Kylie have thoughts? I'm happy to have them go.
Pardon?
If you have thoughts, I'm happy to.
No, I don't. I'm, I'm good with the charge as we wrote it a couple weeks ago. I think it captures not just the spirit of the project, but the direction of the project that the committee needs to take. It has enough detail in it, I believe. Could it be tweaked? Possibly. Does it need to be? I don't think so, to any great degree, but I'm open to listening to any suggestions. But I believe it does give the committee direction, authority, and a general scope of work and options and many things to be considered along the way that will allow them to do, to do their job properly. So I'm, I'm good with what we voted on last time.
Okay. I have, if I may.
If you might. Do you have another copy of that?
I do have copies of that, actually.
If you don't, I can share one with Mr. Kylie.
Yeah, I think.
I just saw that.
Oh, no, I have two, yep. I actually put together.
Does Jen have one for the minutes?
No, I wasn't really intending to submit it as a copy for the minutes, but I'll go through this verbally, some of these things. I'm not necessarily going to comment on all of these, so I, first of all, want to go back to something that I had said previously, which may be more in line with the next item in terms of the committee, but just want to recognize that a lot of work was done on our, by our previous committee, and I'm grateful for the work and time and dedication that was put in. In sifting through a number of the emails, I, what I did was essentially list out what I was hearing from folks in that feedback as some of the questions, oh, I posed them as questions more, but they were comments, many of them, some questions. And some of them go back to as basic as, do we rebuild at all at Penfield, or do we wait and do something later at Jennings? To the more specific, such as, do we provide a concession, a permanent concession, or do we just offer food trucks as an option? There were many, many comments that came in, and I just, I want to thank those who did send in their thoughts and comments. I agree with Mr. Kylie that we do have, we have a really strong foundation here. There are a few places that, again, I'm not necessarily going to go through all of these things, but a few places that I wondered if we might have a little bit more conversation about here, more in the interest of, for the committee's sake, so that they have a sense of, of where we are as a Board of Selectmen and where we may be as more information becomes available. So one of the specific pieces is the fact that, we talked about this last time, the insurance piece and that determination is certainly going to drive a lot of the conversation. In speaking with one of the committee members, it was the sense of, there's concept, there's program, there's design, and there's construction. And at what level and at what point, and I think I touched upon this obliquely last time we talked, at what point do we, as a Board of Selectmen, want to weigh in clearly on the, those program pieces? And I think, just to say explicitly at the table, that it's pretty clear that we need to find out what that insurance determination is in order to be able to move on in that conversation. I think one of the main questions I had in terms of actually making changes to, potential changes to the charge, and would like to talk about that here, is what's on this sheet of paper that you just got, I have as number 10. Do we, essentially, are we going to ask the Building Committee to work through all of the issues, again, from concept, program, design, to then come up, come back to the Board of Selectmen and the other town bodies with a fully formed funding request? Or is it our understanding that we really would perhaps in 90 days kind of have a check back and/or at the point where we know what insurance is going to come back with and what that settlement will be, to allow us to check in and perhaps adjust the charge at that point if need be? So I'm interested to hear thoughts from the two of you about that in particular, or if we feel comfortable simply saying that we know that we'll be checking in with the committee and that that conversation will be happening with them.
Do you want me to take a shot?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Couple thoughts along those lines. One is that this board is ex officio members of the committee, so we can check in with the committee whenever we want. So we are welcome at the committee meetings. Second, as part of our normal process, there is a orientation. We started this about two years ago. I think Riverfield Building Committee was the first one we stepped through, where we basically review with the committee the charge, FLOI, Robert's rules, how the committee works, what resources they have from the town, be it purchasing, finance, that are available to them so that, and that is an opportunity for the committee also to have a lot more back and forth about all of that. But specifically your point, no question, in, at least in my mind, where we have a critical component of the decision process being two levels. What's the reimbursement from the insurance company? And second, how does that impact the 50% rule? Does that make it more than 50% or less than 50% of the appraised value of the structure? And I think that is going to, is one early milestone that's going to drive a lot of the decision process and thinking from there. So I think that is an important piece when the committee has that. We should definitely come back and have another session here and talk about what the thoughts are from that point on. There's a lot that's happened so far with Public Works, the engineering consultants we've had on board, and I think we need to get the committee up to speed on those issues. We also, thanks to Fair TV, have the benefit of them being able to watch both the discussion here in June as well as the August discussion at the Ludlow Middle School, where a lot of the neighbors in the area had a chance to comment. So there's a lot of catch-up and work to do to help the committee get up to speed quickly on that, would be my thoughts. Kevin?
I would agree. I think in, in short, the committee has a lot of work to do, as Mr. Tetra just mentioned, and a lot of information to gather and compile and begin to looking at, and to begin looking at options. The insurance piece will be important. Hopefully, that answer comes in the short term, therefore affecting what some of the options might be or what the best options might be. And I would expect the committee, in conjunction with the First Selectmen's Office, to come back to us as quickly as they can when they have those bits of data that will help drive them toward a decision or toward, toward options in one way or the other, using the 50-50 rule and the other things that are, that are out there for them to consider. If you want to consider putting language in the charge to require them to come back, I guess you could, but I don't know if it's necessary based on the close communication that we're going to have and our access to them and their access to your office and the collaboration that we're going to have along the way.
And the guidance we just gave them, that we'd like to see them come back in a time of.
Right, which is partly why I bring the discussion to the table, because I think while we may not need to, to write this into the committee, I think that, I have heard from some folks who are, had put their name in the hats, so to speak, that they were just listening to the conversation and wanting to have a sense of where we are, and that's partly why I brought that to the table, so that we could be saying that. I agree, I think the committee, I don't know that we need to write that into the charge, but I think it's good that the committee has a clear understanding of that. Not that we're wanting to do their work for them, we've had that conversation here as well, that we're asking the committee to do that job. But I do think the other piece of question out there for me is kind of prioritizing criteria for the committee. And this also came from talking with one of the potential committee members, in terms of the different factors, in fact, a couple of the different appointees. And when I had conversations, I did have a question about how the committee might weigh the varying, the competing priorities. For example, the environmental concerns, the concerns of the neighbors, the cost concerns, and that what, how would they, as a group, weigh those varying priorities? And again, wanting to be clear that if, if we are asking them as a body, as a committee, to take that and to weigh those themselves, to do that work themselves, or if we are wanting to provide some clarity of direction in terms of what the board's priorities might be. And that was another piece that I felt, again, deserved some explicit conversation here. Again, if we, if the thought is that that is something that we are asking the committee to do, I think we want to be clear about that with them. And, or if we're asking them to wait until we have those data points, we have further conversation, and then we'll talk about that together, that's another way to go. But again, interested in hearing the thoughts about that as well.
Want to take a shot? Do you want me to?
Yeah. Thank you very much for that. Those are all good points. This is a very complicated project. You know, there are, in no particular order, there are insurance issues that will drive certain decisions and options. There are flood mitigation regulations that need to be reviewed and adhered to and worked with, neighborhood concerns. We have the building and the structural engineering and all those types of normal challenges that we're going to have in a project. We have a lot of great input from the citizens of our town who have sent us the better part of 100 emails with varying ideas and thoughts and requests for the Great Pavilion, so those all need to be considered. So this is above and beyond the normal Building Committee's scope, but we, we've talked about that two or three times, and I, I believe that that language is built into the charge as it is to incorporate all those additional aspects of this project that might not be there in a typical school building project where it's already been somewhat decided what you're doing versus this kind of takes it back a few steps and will incorporate into the Building Committee's charge, helping us get to a decision on what to do and then actually going and doing it. So it's really two parts, but with many moving parts within each side of that. So I, I agree, it's certainly more complicated than normal, and, but I'm, I'm also confident that the charge we have considers that and that the people that we're putting on this committee will be certainly capable of fulfilling that charge.
I would tend to agree. I think that it would be presumptuous, this board, to kind of set those guidelines for the committee when we haven't had that discussion, we haven't gone through the information that they're going to go through yet in full detail. So I think that that is what we're asking the committee to do. I think that you raised a number of what I'm going to call key decision components, and I think each of those needs to be considered. The weighting, at least in my mind, is going to be somewhat relative, based on the facts at the time, where they come back. You know, obviously, one of the key points we've referenced already, is it, is it greater than 50% or less than 50%? That's going to drive a series of options in terms of what's left we'll explore from that point, much like any homeowner in the beach area. Unfortunately, we've got way too much experience where folks have gone through this, and the town is really in the same situation. So we have that option. Our engineers will have certain options. If somebody said, come back and just build it the exact same way, there's a real question as whether we could even do that. Now, I'm not trying to answer that, but I think that's something that the committee will be discussing with the engineers in terms of, is that even possible to do, independent of the cost issues? So I think that, I don't see any way to do it other than asking the committee, I mean, we've, we're not there yet, we're not ready for the music yet. We're not there yet in terms of discussing the individuals, but I think we've got a committee that's well-balanced from a number of backgrounds, a number of perspectives. We've done our best to pick nine individuals who truly represent our community so that we can have a community decision and community discussion. And again, as members of the Board of Selectmen, we are ex officio on that committee, and we can join them at any time during those discussions. So what are your thoughts?
As I said a few minutes ago, I think it's helpful to have some conversation out loud so that people are not assuming. I brought some of these here because they were questions that were posed by members who are going to be appointed to this committee. So one of my thoughts might be that if, during the public comment period, if members have, rather than just comments, if there are questions, I might be interested in hearing, hearing that, if there's anything that's sitting out there today, they know is a question for them, that we might be able to help them as they get started. We may not be able to address that today, but at least to have that open dialogue. So I think, again, as I said, I think this is a solid charge, and as I said a few weeks ago, at any point in this process, if we find, and if the committee finds that this process needs to be adjusted via the charge, we can have that conversation. So I'm not, I don't have any formal motions to amend.
Okay. I think the other way to say that is also to your point, if the committee needs any guidance from this board, they're welcome to get that anytime, either as part of their meetings, if they asked us to attend, certainly we would, or if, coming back to this board, if they chose to do it that way. So I think they have flexibility in terms of what input they need on this process. Relative to a school project, it's not like we have an Edspec that's governed by state statute, agreed on by the Board of Ed, and it is a big formal process to get that changed, tweaked, or something else. I think we have a little bit more flexibility on this in terms of both the function of the structure or the, as well as how our board works and the charge itself. So I think those are good points, but I, I would see this as a very flexible process where there is dialogue back and forth. It's not just throw it over the fence and come back when you're done.
Yep.
Agreed.
Any further comments?
No.
Mr. Colley?
No, I'm good.
All right. We can either, this is a motion, we don't have to take any action if we don't choose to change it. I think we should go to the public in this case, because technically, it's still a voting item before us.
Okay, sure.
But it's not necessarily vote on it unless we're going to make a, make a modification to it and change that. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the charge before us? Phil Sapone, if you'll come up to the podium, identify yourself.
Phil Sapone, Lido 143 Halls Farm Road in Southport, and nominated to be on the committee. I just wanted to say, I think the charge is kind of well-written because we're going to need flexibility to go forward, like you say. And putting restrictions on it could box us in where we really need to maybe go in different directions in order to become some, some really good options for the town. So I, I think the charge as it is, is a pretty good one. And, you know, from my perspective, you know, we'll do whatever we can to keep the public involved and keep the town involved. The best goal is to meet the needs of the town in general so that everyone is satisfied with, with what we do and try our best to get there.
Mr. Colley, thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Do we need to take any action on this? Any thoughts you have, or can we just move on to the next? If there's no action, I would suggest we just move on to the next item.
Because we, we've
Because we've already voted this, it's been passed.
We're good to go.
This was put on the agenda, so we had the option of making changes, if based on public feedback. And again, I will want to confirm, as my two colleagues have said, there was plenty of great public feedback. I think most of it is, most of the comments were what I would term directed to the board, and their decision process, and considerations they should have, as opposed to what I'll call charge guidelines, in this case. So as Mr. Kyler mentioned, I think well over 50 emails, so it's, we're not going to read them all here, but we do want the committee to consider those items and consider those questions or comments as they go through the process. Then we will move on to the next item. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Penfield Building Committee, and this does require RTM approval.
Just to, and thank you for allowing that interruption. I'm wondering if people may be willing to step forward, just so that we all can see them, are you going to, are we going to do that at the end?
I think that what I'd like to do is finish reading this, get a motion, get a second, and then ask the board if we wanted to take these one at a time or as a group.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then I think how we deal with that.
Wonderful.
What you suggest may be appropriate, if that's okay with you, Mr. Collin.
That's fine.
Thank you.
To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Penfield Building Committee. Mr. Ian Bass, Republican, 495 Lolly Boulevard. Mr. Robert Belito Jr., Republican, 83 Wheeler Park Avenue. Mr. James Bradley, Republican, 111 Cherry Lane. Mr. Andrew Gosefa, Democrat, 165 York Road. Mr. Kenneth Jones, Democrat, 320 Ferris Road. Jane Nelson, Republican, 77 West Morgan Avenue. Hillary Plotkin, Democrat, 70 Woodbine Lane. William Sapon, Democrat, 143 Halls Farm Road. And Richard Special, Republican, 112 Homestead Lane. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Do you want to take, this is a group or individually?
I think, I think a group is the best.
I do, still.
You think so? I mean, it's a great group, too.
Let me just take a couple comments here. There is in the packet, how today, there's resumes and fuller background, but just to quickly step through. Mr. Bass lives on Lolly Boulevard, somebody obviously from the beach area, but is also, I believe, the current president of Fair Acres Association, so he represents a beach constituency down there. Mr. Robert Belito has served on the Board of Finance, is just ending his tenure there, has been involved in our community in a host of ways, including as candidate for office multiple times.
Yes.
The, Mr. James Bradley, who I don't think is here, but also is someone who's been involved in our community on Harbor Management Commission, as well as initially, when we started off the Town Facilities Commission, as well as a well-respected member of the community. Mr. Andy Gosefa, Andy's been chair of the Bike Pedestrian Committee and also very much involved in our town. Ms. Jane Nelson from West Morgan, one of, did I, I'll come back to Ken, somebody who's newer here, and we try to get a balance of experienced people and newer folks, because it would, part of our challenge is, as with every committee we set up, we try and get some new blood in, so we can have some different perspectives on that. I did skip over Mr. Ken Jones, don't take that personally, but your brother is a Red Sox fan. Then you understand why. If that was on your resume, we wouldn't be talking. But Mr. Jones has served on our Town Facilities Commission, as well as the first Penfield Building Committee, so we wanted to have some representation from the first committee, so that we carried over their experience and expertise. Hillary Plotkin has served, most recently, on the Parks and Rec Commission, has served on the RTM, and importantly, also was on the first Penfield Building Committee. So again, we've got some carryover and some, we get the benefit of their institutional knowledge and how this was approached the first time. Bill Sapon, most recently, Chair of Fairfoot Woods Middle School Committee, and Bill, I know you've done a number of other things, too, throughout the town, so thank you again for your expertise there. And Richard Special, also from the Town Facilities Commission, most recently Chair of the Sherman Building School Committee, and somebody else has made a number of valuable contributions overall. So I think we've tried to balance different segments and stakeholder groups in our community to make sure that we have a well-balanced group. This is nine individuals, the charge says we can have up to 11. If at some point in time, it's determined that we need some additional skill sets or additional representation, it would be at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen if we expanded this group up to the 11. I'm going to open up to my colleagues, did you want to comment any further?
Sure, please. I just wanted to quickly thank the volunteers who have stepped up. These are nine very qualified, well-balanced volunteers who have, once again, stepped up to volunteer their time to assist our town in not just a big project, in an important project, but a unique project that we just talked about on the last item, as it encompasses a decision-making process and a building process. So it's going to be a challenge, and we're all going to work together. We're happy to have all of you. I'd like to also thank all the other people across town who did express interest in becoming committee members, I believe it was in excess of 40, and thank them all for their interest and wanting to help our town on this very important project. Just quickly, I do want to thank the former committee members, who worked really hard putting the first Penfield Pavilion in place, and Mr. Plotkin, Mr. Jones, who are holdovers from that committee, who will be able to link the two from both a process perspective and expertise perspective, in bringing forward knowledge and information that they learned and they gained the first time around to make this committee even more well-rounded than it is by bringing forward that knowledge and experience. So that's, that's great as well. And just quickly, to let everyone know that, as Mr. Tetra mentioned before, we are here for you, to work with you, to come to your meetings, to help work on issues that come along. The insurance one is the first one that comes to mind, because that might be the biggest and most important fork in the road, and hopefully, the soonest one that we get to, which will drive some decision-making. And thank you very much, and good luck.
Well said, Selectman Kyler. I just also want to add that the thanks to all those who expressed interest, and some of whom I had a chance to speak to, who said that if it wasn't this project, that they would be willing to serve the town in other projects, which is really phenomenal. I know sometimes we hear that people don't step up, and that we don't have a lot of volunteers, and this is not the case here, and we're incredibly fortunate. I also just want to point out that as I look through this packet with all the questionnaires and the resumes, and thank you for filling those out and sending them to us, it's very helpful. I love seeing the different ways that people learned about this committee, and some was, it was Facebook, some it was Friends, some it was conversation with the first selectmen. It was a nice variety to see that we're trying to reach out and really expand the ability to bring in so many talented people, and we're incredibly fortunate to have all of you. I concur with that sense of support. As you can tell from my earlier comments with the charge, I am interested in that open dialogue and any kind of clarity that we can provide as this moves forward. So thank you, and also good luck. I think one of you, and I can't remember who it was, noted in the questionnaire, that this would be a committee where you, as members, would be making decisions that will most certainly make some people very unhappy. It will most certainly make some people very happy, but there is no, there's not going to be a way in this project to satisfy all of the desires. As I put together in my questions, they were all posed as this or this, this A or B, and you are going to be in a position to make those difficult choices and to stand up and articulate to the community. So I thank you for that, because I know that that can be a challenge, one that I also know that you're up to, so thank you.
And again, I'll reiterate that we got 40 or so applications in, and it's great to see in this town, that number of people willing to step up and volunteer and help the town resolve this issue and move in the right direction, and it just, for those that we didn't quite find room for on this committee, we will find room for you on a committee in the near future. So we want to thank you for your participation and interest, and certainly for the nine folks here, and to Selectman McCarthy-Vaehe's point earlier. Mr. Bass, you're here.
Yes.
You could stand up. Mr. Belito?
Please, so they can come forward, so people at home can see them.
Okay, why don't you come up here, so that we can get you on camera?
We want everybody.
Mr. Bradley is not able to be here, because he was traveling. Mr. Gosefa? Is Andrew here, all right? Mr. Jones, Red Sox fans are allowed up front.
On the other side.
Oh, gosh.
Ms. Nelson? Mr. Plotkin? Mr. Sapon? And Mr. Special is the other gentleman who is traveling at the moment. Since we have you up here, are we ready to vote?
We are, I do have one question. I can hold until we vote.
Well, as long as you're here.
Yeah.
Do you want, do you want any comments from the nominees? Any questions for the nominees?
I have none.
Kristin?
I don't have any questions for the nominees.
Any comments from the public? I can't see any hands going up, so I guess not.
I don't see any, either.
All right, then, are we ready to vote?
We are, hurry up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Just quickly, by way of process, the next step up is, you'll be notified, and we'll make sure Kathleen gets them, you'll be notified by either Jen or Kathleen of the upcoming RTM meeting. You'll need to either show up, actually, I need to show up at the RTM meeting, because I think that the committee conferences are off, and you'll need to be confirmed by the RTM for the nomination to be official. All right? At some point after that, we would then hold an orientation session and step through both the charge, what resources you have, and kind of do our best to bring you up to speed in terms of what you have here, and address any individual questions at that point, or have a little bit more of a group discussion. All right? Any questions from the nominees? Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Tetra, do we have a date and time for the RTM meeting, so we can put it on our calendar?
Jen, the RTM meeting is November?
25th, at 8:00, probably the Board of Ed, but we'll definitely notify all of you with that information on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kyler?
That answers my question, I was hoping to get it on the November organizational meeting and not have to wait till December, so if we can do that, we're great.
All right. Congrats again, and see you at the RTM meeting in November. Moving on to the next item. From the Chief Fiscal Officer. To hear, consider, and act upon a resolution approving a grant from the Department of Transportation for improvements in the Commerce Drive-Kings Highway area, appropriating $1.2 million for the costs of such project, and authorizing the issuance of $1.2 million in bonds to fund such appropriation. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Mr. Mayor, could you step us through this a little bit? And I think, if I remember correctly, we have voted on the overall resolution, but the bond resolution was not available at that point, so you're coming back here to review the bond resolution with us?
The Board, again, again, although I said last meeting, there's no need to approve both in the same meeting, they're separate distinct acts. Last time, the Board did approve the authorization to expend the funds, Board made a contingent upon the approval of a bond resolution, which you have in front of you, is a standard bond resolution for bonding the total project amount of $1.2 million, of which we would bond as needed in our bonding schedule. Total cost of the town, maximum, I, we're not certain about the reimbursement timing, but we have to spend and then collect, and spend, bill, collect. So we'll probably spend the whole 1-2, and at some point, get $960,000 in return. Nothing unusual in the bonding resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
No, I have none.
Any questions from the public? Back to the Board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I believe that's on the Board of Finance agenda later this evening.
Thank you, yes.
Yes.
All right. Next up, from the Chief Fiscal Officer, also, to hear, consider, and act upon a resolution authorizing appropriation of $12,500,000 to refund certain of the town's outstanding bonds, and authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to finance such appropriations. I believe that this also was here before the Board, and it's really the bonding resolution that is back before us. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, could you step us through this?
Yeah, we have about $12 million of bonds that are callable this winter, and the return would be about 6.5%, about a positive to the town, about $700,000, assuming interest rates hold where they are today. It's a standard, actually, there's one difference in this bond resolution, in that there's an item that I took out, that in prior refis, they allowed the town to engage in derivative swaps to fund the escrow account, and I took that out. So that, but that's the only change from prior bond resolutions on refis that you've seen.
And again, just to confirm that the reason we're dealing with this now, and it too will go to the Board of Finance this evening, is because this might potentially happen as early as, early December?
Correct.
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. Just to refresh my memory from the last meeting, the 700, the potential estimated $700,000, that is the net of expenses?
Yes.
It is. Thank you.
About 6.6%, approximately. Threshold for GOFA and GFOA is 3%. Town threshold might be higher than that, but it's well in the range where we should be looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
Kristin?
Just a question about the fee process, and I know the 700 is net of fees, and is it the bond? Let me back up for a second. Similar to when I refinance my home, when I may go out to various banks and they have different selections or criteria, fees, et cetera, when we're doing this with the bonds, different dealers may offer different options. Do we go out to various dealers, are we working with one person or one dealer, and how does that process work for us?
We have bond counsel that the town uses, Pullman Conley, and we have bond advisor, Phoenix Advisors, Phoenix Associates, and we have not selected the underwriter.
That is part of that auction process we've gone through in the past.
This will probably not be an auction process, this will be an underwritten issue. Refis are normally underwritten, the bond issuances are auctions.
And part of my question is, how is, how does the selection process go in terms of choosing?
In the past, it's been, you know, who works in the state, who the town has worked with in the past, who Phoenix Advisors has worked with, who Pullman Conley's worked with. I've been thinking about putting out an RFP, but haven't made a final decision on that, and we'll be talking with Mr. Spurndo, the Phoenix Associates, I think tomorrow morning, actually, on that issue.
Okay, so you're going to work in consultation with him to decide the best course of action? And I'm assuming that, well, I'll say this out loud, as I clearly prefer to do, much as in my own--
Say it quietly.
Pardon me? Say it quietly? No, I'm not going to do that. Much as in my own situation, likening it to a personal family, you have a bank who you may work with on a regular basis, and you have a relationship with that bank, but if you realize that I'm going to get a much better rate at a different bank, I'm going to look at that bank. And that's what I'm hearing you say, that essentially, you're weighing this, and you're certainly, my interest is that we are keeping those fees in--
my interest is that we are keeping those fees in mind, and I hear that's what you're saying, that you're.
Totally, absolutely. No question.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. We're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll notify the Board of Finance?
Yeah.
That this was passed. Okay, very good. All right, next up, tax collector, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by tax collector in the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Do we have an amount recommended?
Yeah, I move to amend this by taking away that period at the end of the sentence, putting in a comma, as well as the amount, $4,324.49.
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The item as amended is before us. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, town attorney, a private executive session on pending litigation. If I may ask you all to leave the room, Attorney Vadi, good to see you.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to enter into executive session.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, may I have a motion to come back into public session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We've just come out of private executive session, there were no motions made and no votes taken. May I have a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting's over. Thank you both and see you at the Board of Finance meeting tonight.